Anyway, we can get started whenever you want.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started.
You sure know.
All right, thanks for coming. We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. All right, we'll move ahead with the approval of the agenda. Before that, Mal is out of state and Ryan is not feeling well tonight, so it'll be just the three of us. Thanks for coming, Dan. Appreciate it. With that, any additions, corrections to the agenda, anybody has?
Yeah, can we add an update on that Seventh Street property?
Yep, I'll put that under old business.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Dan, no? Tim, anything? Nope, I don't have anything either, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
I guess I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Yeah, somebody has a lot of power tonight if they wanna wield it, so. Consent agenda. Questions, comments for administration on the consent agenda?
Uh, let's see, which one was I questioning? Da-da-da, not that one, not that one, not that one. Oh, the delinquent bills. Are these just like a combination of not paying property taxes and certain fees that have been assessed and not paid? Where do they come from?
Typically, I would say, these are typically delinquent utility bills, so people are typically not paying utilities. But if you wanna speak to that, you sure can.
Yeah, it's the ones that are in there, the delinquent, um, utility bills that are usually past six months that we assess the property.
So this is like the culmination of six months of not paying?
Um, it kind of, like, we have a couple of them that we bill for, like, the sump pumps and that, so they've been going in arrears for over a year, so that's one of them. They've changed some owners. We don't have social security numbers to be able to do revenue recapture, so if we can't recapture any of the revenues, then that's when we assess the property.
Oh, okay. So basically, then, as of this going through, all those delinquent payments get wiped off and they start again?
Um, yes. So we start fresh. And if it happens again, then we reassess the next one. Some of them are repeat offenders.
Yeah, so I guess, how many times do they repay it? Is there any further action other than keep assessing them? And hope that gets sold and then we get paid?
Well, I mean, the folks will have to pay it on their property taxes, so I mean, I think we're doing it quarterly, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah.
But we quarterly assess these, so I mean, it catches up eventually, you know, the six-month period, so at the end of the year, I mean, it goes on the property tax bill, and as long as they're paying the property tax bill, then these will be payable at the same time.
Oh, okay.
They get paid with the settlement that we get.
I see, all right. Okay, I'm good.
Anything else, Dan?
Nothing.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make the motion to approve it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, thank you. Uh, visitors, Mike Labonte with great news. As great as can be.
Well, good evening. I was here a month ago presenting recommendations for the structuring and sale of seven million dollars in bonds, Financial Fire Hall project. Uh, one of those recommendations was to secure a credit rating and then go into a competitive public sale. We did that this morning, and I have the results with me. Uh, but first, uh, the first piece of good news is, uh, going through that rating process, we prepared the official statement with staff's help. There was a management call. I sat in on that. Management, uh, staff did a great job on the call, and they upgraded, uh, Casson from AA minus to AA. Um, the primary factors had to do with, uh, greater economic strength due to the high market values of all the, the home values, et cetera, going up, plus the new development. And then your reserves are strong and have kind of shown a trend of growing. Uh, so, mixed in with all that, they felt like it was worth the upgrade. Um, the other good news is, we managed to get our bids in scheduled today and this morning before the Fed announced its quarter point rate hike. Now, some might argue that rates have already started to build that in in anticipation of that, but nevertheless, it was nice to get it done before they made the official announcement. And then, uh, we received seven bids. Um, typically, I tell folks you can expect three to five bids, so seven bids is a fantastic result, and I have handouts if I could approach.
Okay, yes, sir.
Oops, I took two. Okay, there's gonna be extras.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These are included in your packet, too, at the end of the, uh, documents that you've got in there, the resolution.
So this first page is a summary of all the bids, and TD Securities was a little bitter. Uh, they came in just under four percent. If we were to look at what I showed you a month ago, I was projecting a net effective rate of four and a quarter, so about a quarter point lower. Um, now, as a result of this, whenever we receive bids, I never know exactly how they're gonna do the interest rates, so we always reserve the right to rearrange principal. So the next page is the bond issue that if you approve tonight is what you're going to get. It's gonna look exactly like this, but the third page was the one I brought you a month ago. So while we're still borrowing seven million dollars, I did move around the principal so that the annual payments would be, you know, pretty close to each other, as best we can. Um, we try to keep the payments within five thousand dollars of each other. So let's just say it's gonna average somewhere around four hundred and twenty grand a year versus, um, originally, we had thought it would be more like four hundred and thirty to four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So savings of about four hundred grand in total payments over the life of the bonds. Now, the one thing that was a little bit, um, disheartening is if you were to look on the page two, under sources of funds, you're going to see bond premium about seventy-six grand, and then up above, you're gonna see underwriters' compensation of just about that same number. So between the underwriters taking its compensation and the re-offering that was generated, it was basically a wash. What does that mean? It means I couldn't overpass your construction fund. If you recall, one of the discussions was, if we had a bunch of re-offering, we weren't gonna reduce the bond. We're gonna jam it and give you more budgetary flexibility for your, your project. Um, I did keep the construction fund earnings where they were. Uh, staff has a plan to work with an investment firm to manage these proceeds so they can maximize your interest earnings and also monitor your arbitrage post issuance compliance. Uh, great idea to do that. So based on these sources and uses, project, uh, funds available for project costs, assuming interest earnings come into this level, seven point one three eight million. Um, and I think that's a reasonable expectation based on how quickly you intend to spend the funds and the amount and current rates that are out there. Um, let's see if there's anything different. Oh, you might look, if you look at this closely and you were to look at the net effective rate on page two, kind of halfway up on the right-hand side, you're gonna see three point nine nine seven percent versus if you were to go to the first page, you're gonna see three point nine nine five percent, and that's a function of me moving the principal around. Right? So it's, it's not like we did a math error, it's just, net effective rate is a function of how the interest is allocated throughout the deal, so, um, all in all, a great result, and I'll see if you have questions.
Okay.
So this credit rating that we got, how long's it good for? Or do you have to do it every time you do a bid?
You get to make that choice. Every time you do a financing, we can choose to do a rating or not, and a lot of factors go into that. One is, do we think we'll maintain the rating? Another one might be, is it worth the amount of money? Cause this rating is gonna cost you eighteen thousand dollars, but you're gonna save three hundred thousand dollars in interest compared to if you'd gone unrated. Um, but if a deal gets real small, or if it's real short, like three years, four years, let's say you're doing a temporary bond, then we might say, you know what, it's not worth those added issuance costs, we won't see enough benefit. So you're not required. Now, this rating is assigned to these bonds. Now, the good news is, to all the other bonds that you've had rated in the past that are outstanding, all those folks think they have AA minus bonds. They've just been transformed into AA bonds, so that makes their bonds more valuable, so now everyone has a real warm, fuzzy feeling about Casson, right? Um, but it's not guaranteed to be maintained for the life of these bonds. Eight years from now, ten years from now, you decide to dump a lot of cash and your cash reserves go down, periodically, there's gonna be a surveillance where they're gonna ask for much of the same information that we provided with the official statement. They're gonna wanna have another management call, and as a result of that, they could say, you know what, we're gonna dump you back down to AA minus, or we're gonna grade you up even further, AA plus. But you don't have to worry in terms of these payments, they cannot change. So even if your rating was to change in the future, these are fixed. This is, there's no, um, variability here.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Anything, Dan? No. Thank you.
I didn't do it, the market did it.
Well, yeah, I know, the market did what the market did, that's good.
Don't take credit.
Anything else you have for us?
No, um...
Resolution so that we can move forward.
There is a resolution. Um, I'm not sure we got all the blanks filled in, in time, but if, if not, it's gonna be pulled, all the data's gonna be pulled from these worksheets, so.
We got the updated resolution here, so I think it's pretty good.
Oh, did you get it? Okay, good, all right.
All right, any other discussion or questions at all? Thanks for how you work on this, Mike.
You bet, and if it is approved, uh, closing will appear on August ninth.
Okay, so, perfect. Uh, any other discussion or questions that you have for, anything on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution issuing the sale of the bonds.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. Um, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thanks, and thanks, Mike.
Anything else you want me to stick around for?
I think we're good tonight.
Great.
Thank you.
One question, I know typically, we have done a, like, a sort of an update on our big spreadsheet.
Yes, sir.
When do you, uh, when do you think you wanna do that?
Um, you know, this fall. Um, I'm kinda booked up through August, but, uh, and in the last week of August, I'm on vacation. But September, October, does that work?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. But Neil, now that you're entering into your budget season, there's that first levy that's on there, you need to work that in.
Yep.
Done, all right. But yeah, let's, uh, let's schedule something this fall.
All right.
Thursday morning meeting, Tim, we can work in that on project two, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, on to G1 Old Business Cannabis Moratorium.
So including your package, you've got a couple of items here. Um, one of those is a ordinance that you've seen before that was discussed earlier. Basically, it would be an ordinance that's been adopted by a lot of cities throughout the state of Minnesota, or is being adopted, in the process of being adopted, very similar resolution. That would delay the, uh, allowed sales until January of twenty-five, when the first permits are expected to be, um, sent out. Included informational, just sort of memo article here from, uh, from a local paper that was talking about Minnesota cities that are using, um, that legislative authority to, uh, take some limits on it. So basically, what I'm looking for tonight is, um, we've already had the hearing on this, is whether the council would like to enact this or not. Um, you know, the sale starts August first. Um, you know, certainly like Rochester, they did put theirs in place, um, you know, it's up to the council, um, what you wanna do. So I need some feedback on that, and then I do have another item in there related to cannabis, and that is whether we would allow it to, uh, you know, potentially be sold immediately somehow or another, or not. There is ordinance about cannabis use in public, so there is, uh, another push by a lot of these cities, whether they're allowing it or not, to limit the use in public, which typically, a lot of them are piggybacking on the tobacco ordinances, so the state of Minnesota's got pretty strict tobacco smoking in public, smoking in state parks is banned, smoking in vehicles is banned, that kind of stuff. So that's what a lot of them are kind of piggybacking.
Smoking, oh, and smoking in vehicles?
State parks, yeah.
If you're in a park in your vehicle, you're not allowed to smoke a cigarette?
No, you have your window open.
Interesting.
So anyways, um, this one here is, I mean, obviously, we're not having hearing tonight, but this would allow us to limit some of the smoking in public kind of, uh, aspects of it. So it's relatively straightforward. Um, so, anyhow, I just wanted to get some feedback from you on tonight, whether we're interested in doing any of these or all of these, um, and once I have that feedback, then I'll know if we need to, uh, have a public hearing for anything.
So I just, just one maybe strange question, but if they're not gonna issue any permits until January of twenty-five, is this even, I mean, I know we had to public, is it even necessary, cause you can't do it anyway?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's been, that's been my question, you know, and I know I brought that up originally, and then hearing that they were looking at really issuing permits until twenty-five, um, I kinda wondered, you know, but at the same time, there are a lot of cities, I guess, that are concerned that people will sell even though they're not permitted, and it may create a, it creates another, I guess, enforcement mechanism.
Okay.
For a, for a police officer, say, well, okay, you're in violation of city ordinance number one, two, three, that bans sales.
That's fine, I mean, cause they can't get a permit anyway, and they'd be violating the law by doing it, we're just saying.
Minnesota statute, couldn't they just say, use Minnesota statute, too?
Well, as I said, I mean, I, you know, I, part of it is, I don't understand why some of the cities are doing it, but lots and lots of cities are doing it, partly because I think they're concerned that there's, there's less enforcement around it, or will be less enforcement, because I mean, I guess, you know, it's legal to, to have August first, I mean, in your home, a certain number of plants, it's legal to smoke, certainly at your own home, whether it's in public or not. Um, so I think that's why a lot of cities are kind of doing it out of the concern that there might be something that crops up. It's necessarily a concern I have, but I just, you know, bring it to, to you all as a, as an issue.
So back...
I don't know, Rochester is, they put it in place, so I, you know, that was kind of the feedback, was, well, see what Rochester does, well, so.
I don't wanna copy Rochester.
No, I don't, necessarily neither, certainly not with the...
Back to the smoking in public and the state rules and stuff, that that is specifically for tobacco?
Yeah.
It would not apply to smoking any other thing?
Um, well, I think in the article, if you look in the article there, it does talk a little bit about what some of the parks up in St. Paul are doing, and currently, I think they allow it for Indian ceremonies or something like that, uh, Native American ceremonies. I think it's allowed for, in some of the parks, they do, um, not restrict it. But I mean, you know, everything's right now is in flux, so it's quite, it's quite interesting to see that.
It seems odd to me that the smoking would be specifically for tobacco and not anything else at the state level, and if it currently is, I would assume they're gonna be changing that shortly.
I guess it already is illegal until August first, and it's not, you weren't supposed to smoke marijuana before, anyway, so that was under the drug rule.
Right.
So the old tobacco rule was for tobacco, but they just haven't...
What about, like, the vaping stuff, is that banned, too?
In Minneapolis.
Yeah, I mean, so for example, like, you know, on the third page of that memo, you've got, Minneapolis is still waiting its next steps, but for now, marijuana use in a park is allowed.
I just don't wanna, like, over top a rule that exists with a rule of our own. Uh, this seems unnecessary time and effort.
I don't think the state legislature is planning on taking any action on this until next year, you know, in terms of changing any laws.
So you're saying it's from August to December, is the possibility of smoking gonna be legal in parks?
August until...
As long as it's marijuana and not tobacco?
I mean, it's, it's very inconsistent, but I will say, part of it is that I think that some folks at the state level have a different mentality to, towards tobacco versus, you know, marijuana. I mean, it's very clear they do, because there's very strict rules on tobacco, you know, T-21, like, you know, when I was a kid, you could be eighteen and you could buy cigarettes, now you have to be twenty-one. At the same time, you know, there really aren't those same rules on marijuana. I mean, you know, at least in terms of what they're, what they're, the way they're talking about, and it's hard for me to understand, because I feel like you're, anyways. So I, yeah, it's not like I said, up to you guys if you wanna do it, otherwise, you know, um, we can see how it goes, and, uh, you know, I just think that's, that's kind of why I'm bringing it to you tonight, just to talk about it.
Okay. They got anything else on that?
I mean, I, I mean, it is what it is, you can't have it, or you can't sell it without the license from the state. The moratorium just gives our police department just one more thing to hang their hat on, I guess, is the only thing it would be, correct?
Right, during that period of time.
There's no other...
I mean, it really should not be necessary. I think it's just more of a, just in case kind of a thing.
Yeah.
What would our city attorney recommend? Is the state statute enough, or should we have our own statute to statute it to death?
You know, I haven't looked closely at the new, the new law, and so I couldn't speak to it sort of off the top of my head. Um, and what I will say is, I know that statewide, there are a number of the large cities in the metro that have passed these moratoriums as well. Um, so they're, you know, it's not just, it's not just Rochester. Um, I know Lakeville, Minneapolis, St. Paul, I wanna say Plowington, um, and those are just the ones that I remember from what I've read about that, but I haven't dug into it myself, so.
Okay.
And we can always undo this anytime we want.
Yeah, you can. I mean, I think one plus to it is, it does allow you to give it, um, the council a chance that we'll need to talk about, like, what kind of controls do we want? So it's gonna be legal. How many, uh, of these do you wanna allow? I mean, we have to allow up to at least one. Do we want to say, you know, fine, you know, we don't have a problem with it? I mean, in Rochester, I think they're limiting it to half the number of liquor stores. That's what their guideline is right now, which I don't know how many that is in Rochester, but that's what they're doing.
Wasn't there a state thing that says that you can only have one per so many thousands?
Twelve thousand five hundred people, yep.
So we could only issue one anyway?
Yeah, well, you're only, you're only required to have one for twelve thousand five hundred. You could have, you could have as many as it can support.
I thought that...
I mean, it's gonna be very interesting, because what you've seen in other states is that there's this initial spike where everybody thinks that they can go out and make it, and then after a couple of years, you know, so people who are successful buy out the other people, and the other people get out of the business, cause they can't make it work. So I mean, it, I, I'm not necessarily a, you know, I, I think it could be done properly here without any lot of issues. We have current vendors that might be able to do it, but I mean, it's, it does give us some time to just continue to talk about it without having to worry about anything.
Okay.
I gotta think we have plenty of time to talk about it anyway, and the fact that we don't have a moratorium will kind of light a fire under us to make sure we get it worked out before the state law goes into effect. Whereas a city like Rochester, the time will come, and they'll be like, hey, we haven't talked about this. Now they're gonna discuss it for months and months before they finally lift their moratorium. That's what I, I don't know, that's, the bigger the government is, the longer things take, so. And I don't, I just don't like the concept of having our own rule that is just a duplicate of a state rule. Like, it just seems redundant.
If you're reading here, though, it says recreational marijuana will become legal August first. You will be able to smoke it in a local park, public sidewalk, city street, close to a bar.
Now, yeah, so, so in terms of the moratorium, versus the, versus the, I, I think you, what you're getting at is the same thing I was talking about earlier, is like, the smoking, tobacco and marijuana should be equivalent, right? In terms of where you're allowed to do it?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we don't pass the, I mean, I certainly was hearing Paul, I mean, and I've got mixed feelings on it, right? Realistically, we shouldn't have an issue, because they shouldn't have any permits until January of twenty twenty-five, so it really shouldn't be a problem for us. So on that issue, on the smoking in public...
Since they're not allowed to grow it right now, technically, they can't even get a crop for a few more months after August first.
They can grow it, they just gotta grow it at home, you know, a little starter plant.
They can legally grow it right now, can't they?
August first. Odds of August first.
Yeah, right, so they gotta, they're gonna have to wait a few months before they can actually harvest anything.
Sure, no, I mean, let's just...
Unless they drove through another state and brought it back.
I could see, like, even though a lot of cities are passing it, I can see where, I mean, to me, we shouldn't know.
They're the baby plant, and you can have it going pretty fast.
In terms of, uh, the smoking in public, I think that's one that the council should definitely take very seriously.
I'm much more concerned about that, and I don't, I don't like the idea that tobacco should be more heavily regulated than marijuana, or any other thing that's getting smoked that we consider a public health.
So consensus be tabled, the moratorium for now, and let's go on to the discussion about the public use, cause it's kind of two separate things, the permit to sell and that is the moratorium. Table that for now, and have more discussion now about the public use.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I was just saying, I mean, to me, I'm just kind of seeing what other cities are doing, so, you know, I'm necessarily concerned about it, because it really should not be an issue for the overall, cause it should be a year and a half before we see any of that. In terms of the smoking in public, what I can do is, is schedule that for a public hearing maybe in August, and we'll have more conversations about that at one of our meetings in August.
What is, I'm in favor of whatever our tobacco ordinance is.
Sure.
It should just mirror that.
Okay.
I guess...
I don't see any reason why it shouldn't.
Yeah. Would you have time, Mel, between now and, before we look at this again, to look at the state law and see if there's anything that's missing that we might wanna cover? Just in case, cause they threw it together pretty fast, they could've...
They're gonna be tweaking a lot of stuff, I think, you know, that's part of the reason, like, I think the legislature has just said, we're not gonna issue anything until twenty twenty-five, too, because that does give them a whole nother year in legislative session next spring, if they really did, like, you know, the tax, the tax bill, they screwed up three hundred and twenty-five million dollars. You know, it's a big, big issue. They're gonna have to fix that, they're gonna have to fix some of these things, too, cause there's unintended consequences of some of this stuff.
I guess, do we have somebody who might, like, um, interact with businesses that might be interested in getting this permit? And kind of see what their odds are?
I would expect that the, uh, the current tobacco shop in town would, I mean, that would be a natural, it would make sense to me. I know that Kathy at the liquor store has talked about it, you know, and the, uh, the state said that they're intending these to be for a certain subset of license holders, but it doesn't mean that other people will apply and potentially get a license. So it's also gonna be regional, so, you know, they're not gonna let, one little city gonna have fifty of them. They're gonna, they wanna spread it out, too, so I guess to me, that's, that's kind of what makes sense, is, um, you know, should the city pursue looking for one through the liquor store? I don't know, you know, it's something the council can talk about. So.
Okay, all right, we're good on that for now? We'll come back to the public use.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll let that cannabis moratorium lie, and then we'll have the next one for a public hearing in August.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, on to number two, inter-fund loan agreement, fire truck and the dump truck capital.
Sure. Including your package, you've got a copy of an inter-fund, uh, fund loan agreement that would be from the City of Casson Electric Fund, um, to the Fire Truck and Equipment Fund. And you see the fund numbers there, four, uh, six oh four and three eighty-six. So, uh, one thing that we've looked at today, of course, we did borrow, uh, seven million dollars, um, and we got a good interest rate, um, based on the market. We did have some ability in the, in our own, to, to do this internally, and so in order to save interest and basically just to not have to go to the market for more additional funds, um, I'm recommending that we go ahead and move forward with the inter-fund loan. Um, it acts a little bit like a bond, where one of our funds will loan the other fund money. In this case, uh, the two big items are the fire truck, which is about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which you'll remember, we go back to the, uh, our, our work session earlier this year. Of course, we ordered this two and a half years ago. It's due to be picked up, actually, today was the day it was due to be picked up. Now they moved it back to the third of August, so, um, hopefully, we'll see that pretty soon here, but, so it is, it is there. But, uh, the other item would be the, uh, the dump truck that we approved at our last council meeting. So, um, we're looking at about a million dollars at three point five percent interest rate. Um, so this actually, it'll work in tandem with the, um, the loan that's being paid off next year. So we have a, uh, we borrowed a CIP, we did a CIP bond about ten years ago. Our last payment will be next year for that, so what we'll do is, we'll start, you know, uh, those same payments will slide over into paying this back through the general fund.
And this leaves the fund balance in the electric fund sufficient for...
Well, so, yeah, I mean, my goal with the electric fund is, we need about two and a half million dollars just for operations, and about two million dollars to serve as a reinsurance. And we have a little margin, in this case, we have a margin of about a million dollars. It'll still show up on our books as a, as a O two.
Sure.
So it'll still be in the, in the audit as a, as an amount. It'll, it'll show up as part of the fund, but it'll be, it won't be a cash amount, so.
Okay, all right. I'm good with that. Any other question, any questions for Tim on that? Comments? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the inter-loan fund, loan.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Uh, number three, we added the Seventh Street property update, so can we get an update on that? Would that be Ian?
Uh, I, I have no updates to share on that property since I last updated the council at the last meeting, and I...
So, yeah, so Ian, um, if you, remind me again what the last situation was. You discussed...
I discussed...
Options with the county?
With the, the Public Health Director of Nodge County, and she described an alternative option that could be taken to offer the residence assistance of her property.
Okay, and then since that time, nobody's been in contact with the, the owner of the property?
No.
Okay. Um, I just was curious, because I, I rode past the, uh, property in question on my way here, and the, um, temporary shed tent that she had set up has been moved. Um, the tent has been moved, but the stuff was not moved, so it appears that the owner is in the process of doing some rearranging, so I don't know if she was doing that as for something that we've asked her to do, or is intending to try and...
I walked past it yesterday, it looked the same as it has last week, so I'm not sure what happened with the, uh, the tent there, but...
Or the wind.
Sounds like a good follow-up.
We're suggesting maybe Ian should walk by and take a look and see what's going on, or keep an eye on it, cause I don't know if she's moving it to try and provide more screening, or because she's gonna buy some more tents, or what the situation is.
Two, that pickup that is sitting in front of the tent is now full of that same stuff.
Oh, is it?
Whole vehicle's actually on the property are full, although I will say, like...
The front seat, yeah.
I walk, I walk past it on a regular basis, and it, it hasn't been quite as bad as it has in the past, partly because the tent does hide a lot of stuff, but also...
You mean from the street?
Yeah, from the street view. On the backside, you can see everything, but it still doesn't seem to be quite accumulating as fast as it has in the past, so that's a plus, I guess, so. But yeah, no, that sounds like a good idea, Ian, maybe you need to follow up with that.
Yes, I'll follow up and have an update for next meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks. Uh, new business, software changeover.
Including your package, you have some information, um, that, um, Jessica will talk to, I think, tonight. Um, just to preface it, we did have a, we did have a, a good process, I think, where we reviewed a number of different options. Um, currently, we have what's called Black Mountain. It's a system that was instituted back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, so it's about fifteen years the city's had it. Um, one of the first, first jobs that Nancy did when she was hired was go through an RFP with that. At that time, it was selected. I think we found over the last couple of years that it's becoming increasingly outmoded, technologically speaking, especially as regards to the support for our utility building, um, modules. I know that, um, there's lots of different types of software. In Casson, we have electric, uh, utility, which is a little bit more complicated, has a few more pieces to it than some of the other cities do. So, um, with that, if you wanted to go ahead, just, uh, talk about what happened there, Jessica.
Yeah, so we went out and we basically...
Yeah, so, we went out and we basically narrowed it down to three. So, we had NIS, which PeopleCo currently uses. We had Tyler ERP and then we had Civic Systems. So, we did a demo in-house with Tyler and then Civic Systems. And I kind of just went over everything that we were kind of asked for. We gave them kind of a platform of what we were asking for, or which our main motivator was utilities. And so, we had everyone in here. They got to ask their own questions. We also got to dive into a few other things that maybe they didn't have on their agenda. And after, Jared was in on them as well. Kim was in on them, Linda, Jess, everybody basically within the city hall. And we kind of narrowed it down to Tyler. Based on that, it was because of the utilities driver. So, Jared kind of asked about the long-term for prepaid options and the extent of the other utility services that they're kind of moving towards with solar and you have wind and you have all the electric services as well. Civic Systems did a great job. However, some of the feedback and kind of my own personal as well as Jared was that they weren't moving in the direction that we were trying to get to. So, the prepaid and all that stuff is becoming a pretty new thing. And unfortunately, they were still two to three years before they're even gonna look into that. So, the, I know that they are more expensive, Tyler is, than Civic Systems, but unfortunately, you're gonna pay for that advancement because Tyler is always looking at the next step. I have personally worked with Tyler through Mankato. They have Munis, they have ERP. Munis is for people with a higher budget. ERP is for people with a smaller budget. I did have great service and everything with Tyler. We did have a couple of things when we implemented just on customer service, but I know that ERP has a different customer service line. And so, I, that was one of my biggest drivers for them. I'm like, how is your customer service? Because we did have some very bad things with them and he just said they're a different line. They really strive in customer service, especially at a smaller level. So, in your packet, you'll see a resolution to move forward with Tyler. And you can kind of see, I did put together a little comparison as well, kind of laying out the cost and what Black Mountain currently costs, Tyler and then Civic Systems, and just some touching points on the positive and some of the downfalls that each one offers as well.
Perfect. I mean, the big, the big knock on Tyler is the cost. So, I mean, as you can see there, it's quite a bit more expensive on the yearly fees. And that's kind of a different model that a lot of these companies have gone to now. I mean, any of you that work with technology know that, for example, Microsoft, you used to be able to buy the, the office suite, you know, and now it's, you rent it and you pay a yearly fee for 365. You know, we bought Black Mountain. I don't know what the original cost was, but the yearly fee is pretty low. I mean, it's a little over $1,000 a month. With Tyler, I mean, the initial cost to implement, a lot of that, we've, we've been saving. So, the utilities have been saving for, preparing for this changeover, so that isn't as big of an issue. Of course, it's $41,462 a year, so that's quite a bit more. I think if, if we didn't have the electric utility, we probably would go with Civic, just because I think it prob, I mean, it's a huge upgrade from what we have currently and the cost is much more in line, the yearly cost is. But, based on, you know, like what Jessica said and also, so, you know, that Tyler does seem to have the most complete package. Civic is a very good system, too. So, you know, it's up to the council, but, you know, we will probably tweak the numbers a little bit, too, on the spread, so it won't be as big of an impact. So, I guess for me, it comes down to dollars and cents on the general fund, because we increased the yearly cost. The general fund's paying 22% of it. Well, 22% of 41,000 is a lot more than 13,227, so it's gonna mean an increase required in the general fund for a levy this year. So, we'll probably tweak these numbers a little bit. You know, electric will probably end up paying a little bit more because frankly, it's one of the reasons we're going with the system is for the electric department. So, it makes sense to me that they would have a little bit more of skin in the game.
It should.
It should. And it'll, it'll eliminate, it'll eliminate the impact maybe a little bit. We'll still see an increase from the general fund. It'll be required. It'll be necessary, but, so anyway, I think that's kind of where we're at. And I think anything we do, we're talking probably a year to 18 months to implement anyways, so it may be a while.
Good day, it'd be nine months, but they even suggest, don't push it because then things get fallen and I've been through two software updates in Mankato and I can tell you that they're horrendous, so.
Yeah, I mean, if one of the biggest drivers was the electric utility, then they should be paying over half or more of the bill.
Yeah, I think they certainly, the percentage would certainly increase, yes.
Right, I mean, that's, that's on the ratepayers, which are taxpayers, too, but that's the cost of doing business. If we didn't have the electric utility, we wouldn't have to have that.
Right, exactly.
So, whatever the difference is, should be-
Yeah, a lot of it will go towards electric.
And we do, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to know, the cost difference is substantial. Is it really worth that extra, triple the payment or triple the cost? I mean, do we gain that much out of it yearly?
It's hard to know. I mean, I don't, I haven't used these systems before and I don't know if it's that much of a, I mean, both of the presentations were very good. Tyler is definitely top of the line, you know, like they're probably, they're one of the largest companies in the United States that does software. Civic's based out of Wisconsin. Like I said, they have a lot of clients, too. So, could either one of them work? That's, it's certainly possible they could.
Well, I'm just looking, I mean, you got 14,000 versus almost 42,000.
Right, no, I agree. I mean, to me, if they were, you know, relatively close on that, then it wouldn't even be, I wouldn't even have considered. It would have been, nope, that's the one, because-
Because you really, you're really gonna have to sell that. That's the, the bottom of the software, the, to me, to say that it's worth $28,000 a year more.
Also can scale back some of these items, too. They are optional. The pricing is, was given in the quote and it will stay forever a quote. So, if they, for instance, two years from now, we choose to, we take one of these out and it's a little bit of a cost, $8,000, we can add that in two years if we want at the same cost. It doesn't change to us. So, he did offer me some scaled on options. We can get it down closer to 28. One of the biggest things with Civic versus Tyler, though, is the automatic updates. So, they're on the cloud base. They handle all of that. All your security breaching, all your firewalls, everything. That's huge. I mean, even currently at city hall, like, we have different firewalls, but we still get a ton of, you know, sizing and all that kind of stuff. Like, it's just, that's one of them. PCI compliance is another one, so we currently handle that in-house, but we don't offer a lot of, like, we have credit card payments, but not to the advancement that we're probably going to be moving to. So, they handle all the PCI compliance. All your updates are all live, so you get a service back at night, they automatically do it for you. Right now, we currently handle our, our updates in-house. So, you have to go on your computer, log on, do your update. You can't work on your computer until the update's done. Another one is two versus Civic System is you pay it by the user. So, Civic System, say for instance, you have eight users, you have to pay after, I think it was three, you have to pay each additional user fee and then you have to continue to pay that. So, there are some savings with Tyler and we definitely can look at those. Like I said, I believe when I worked with Cody, we did get him down to like 28. There was a couple of things that I don't know if I would take out 100%, just because on my side as well as, you know, the electric side, those are pretty substantial. But, we definitely can drive the cost down. There is options. We don't have to have every option center. So, if we need to scale it back, like I said, the, the price stays as an option and we can add it in two years. It's not a set in stone.
One of those options, too, I know, and maybe Ian can talk to it a little bit more, was kind of a little bit more outreach to the community. Tyler does have a couple of community engagement tools, which might be beneficial, and I know that's part of the cost. I don't know if you can remember talking about that a little bit?
Um, just briefly, they have like an app that people can use on their phones and then just another way to get up to the citizen, you know.
Yeah, the calendar, I believe, was a part of that.
Yeah, we talked about having a community calendar at one point, you know, it's a way, a way of throwing that out.
Well, and the big difference after that explanation is the automatic updates and them taking care of the security and the PCI compliance is a big deal. That's where-
And it's a one-stop shop.
Right.
It's all your credit card and everything. It's all under one umbrella.
And we don't have staff doing it or taking time to do it or lost time waiting for something to update.
Yeah, so there's an issue, say for instance, with the credit card. You don't, like, right now, so we have to go through the bank, like, we just had one two days ago. So, we had to follow it through the bank, then we have to track it back to BDS, then we have to track it back to someone else, and then we finally get an answer on, okay, well, this $540 made up these two payments. Going forward with the new software, you'll see, okay, we have $540. These two make up that payment. So, it, it will eliminate a lot of fiasco and a lot of runaround on some of the payments and stuff. And so, I, I do feel like Tyler is the better option. It is more expensive, I'm not gonna lie, but the direction that Casson wants to go towards, I feel it fits all those needs.
One other thing would be, and I know that Justin and I have talked about this, as we look at sort of right shaping the workforce and staffing changes over the next couple of years, I think there are some technological solutions to some of the work that's being done currently by staff. So, it might allow us to see some cost savings through some reductions in force.
I got a few things. Maybe you said this, Tim, but I wasn't, I don't think I was digesting as fast as you were talking. Can, can you explain to me why the electric billing needs the upgrade, but the water, sewer or storm doesn't?
Well, I guess the biggest issue with Black Mountain right now is that it has a fixed number of lines. So, it sends that kind of a stupid thing. But, you know, for example, the state of Minnesota came out with a new tax. They said the green tax and you've got to put it on everybody's bill. We wouldn't be able to do it. We cannot add anything more to our utility bill right now.
You're saying there's only so many line items in the invoice?
I think it's eight, eight lines. So, they, and they, and we've talked to them and we said, hey, you know, this seems like kind of a no-brainer, but they're like, ah, we're not changing it.
So, you're making, you're saying that that's the electric utility's fault?
Well, it's not their fault, but the fact is that the state does have more charges on electric bills, excuse me, than a lot of, you know, so for water, you have a state tax, you have a water use rate and you have your base fees. That's pretty much water, so three. You know, electric has got your renewable, you know, CIP tax, it's got the base fees, it's got the, I think that most recently, when we instituted that capacity, you know, charge, we actually had to take one of the ones that was previously on the bill off. It was a-
Oh, I missed it.
It was a wind, it was a wind power credit. So, it worked. I mean, we were able to, we didn't have a lot of users who were participating, so it wasn't, it wasn't an issue, really a huge issue. But, at this time, like, if there was a new one that would come out, so I mean, that's basically the nuts and bolts of like the biggest issue, is it just is outmoded. A good example would be, so we have tanless meters. The way a tanless meter works is it's an in-out meter, right? So, for solar, it works great because they can read your usage and they can also read the output of the solar with one meter. It's, it's not difficult to do that. Well, with Black Mountain, you have to still have two accounts because it can't balance those, so you, you know, so what Cassie does is she creates-
It can only add up, so you gotta have-
Right, so Cassie creates a bill for your use, like you-
I got you.
Your, your bill was $100 total and then your solar panels generated $100 worth of credit or something like that. So, she actually has to, you know, do it, no, it's doable. She is doing it, but she takes those bills and she cancels, I mean, she prints two bills off, you get both of them in the mail and then on your account, she cancels one off on the other by taking it as a miscellaneous deduction.
So, she does manual adjustments.
So, so Black Mountain's an antiquated software with no intentions of upgrading?
Yeah, so like, say for instance, on my side, when I have to pull a report and I pull hundreds of reports a day, I can only open one report at a time. So, if I want to look at a 2021 report and a 2023 report, I can't. I have to literally print everything, which, it's, it's hard, especially when you're doing audit and you're opening hundreds of, just within an hour, you know, you physically can't cooperate with the software.
These discussions that you're saying, these are savings that we're gonna get from either of these two options, though?
Yeah, I honestly think we'd have a reduction in just printing and, you know, people's cost, like, say for instance, payroll, that's one, we do everything paper right now, so that'll all be automated. You know, the utility bills, you won't have to do manual adjustments. So, really freeing up a lot of the time that is spent on a lot of these items also will have more time to work on other items as well.
Or, like I said, potential cost savings in man-hours.
Yeah, I'm fully, I understand that there should be a lot of productivity increase going from a 20-some-year-old software to something that's at least actively being worked on. I'm just, I don't quite understand why the electric utility is paying so much more than the others in the breakdown, other than the fact that the electric utility has, has money, so they can afford to pay for it. And maybe that's, that's-
Speaking to that, I guess, you know, that is, Nancy set that up.
Yeah.
You know, after, I looked at it, you know, when Jessica generated this basically and reviewed it, you know, and I don't know why she set it up that way. But, I mean, I would imagine part of the reason was that at different times, city councils want to limit their levies. And so, one way to limit your levy for a council is to shift some of those costs onto other, this is a relatively easy spot for a council to shift cost off of the general fund into the utility funds. I, I mean, it's, it's not an unusual practice in a lot of cities, so I would imagine that's why the percentage is what it is, because you're right. You know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I thought you had mentioned, you know, shifting more to the electric and I, I don't know that I'd be okay with that.
I think utilities in general.
I think, I think the, oh, utilities in general, so taking some of the general fund and kind of adding some of the-
Spreading it through the water, sewer, and stormwater.
I don't have much problem with that. Okay, let's see. Civic Systems, you got a downfall. It has no smart metering. Does that mean what I think it means, where you still have to have somebody go out and read the meters?
Um, no, smart metering is kind of your prepaid as well as two to one. So, as Tim kind of mentioned, we have two systems right now. So, if you want to shut off someone's electric or any of their utilities, you have to go out to Tanlis and you have to go into Black Mountain. So, Civic Systems is basically a one-to-one, so you still have to go out to Tanlis and it only imports. And whereas Tyler imports where if you shut someone off, it automatically shuts them off in the system and then it automatically reads back to Tanlis, but it doesn't import. So, we'll still have to import the reads, but we won't have to do both. So, it's, it's very advanced compared to what we currently have as well as Civic Systems, so it's kind of hard to explain.
Okay.
So, the shut-off basically has to be done in two different spots right now and when we go to Tyler, it'll only be one and Civic Systems is basically still the two.
Okay, that's, that's a lot more than I guess I needed. I was just curious, because if the downfall here, if that meant that somebody would still have to go actually read the meters, that obviously would kind of, to me, that would just cross that one out, but. So, there's a yearly fee, a subscription, basically, right? Is, is part of this, and maybe this is in the resolution or something, is the subscription, are we locked in, like, on a contract where that, that's got a fixed amount that it can increase every year, or is it gonna be the same for 10 years or?
It depends on the actions that you choose. So, like I said, if we-
Right, so next, but next year, you know, I don't know if we, this is billed monthly or yearly or whatever, the company could be like, you know, we're not making enough profit margins, so we're gonna jack the price up 5% on your subscription. And we just paid 100 grand, we can't afford to change again.
I don't, I, I actually don't have that yet.
That's a good question, because, you know, I mean, I would say typically you do see 3% to 5% increases each year.
What I was gonna say is we should ask them for what's your, you know, the last five to 10 years, whatever your increase has been.
Yeah, if, if there's not gonna be a contract saying, this is the increase rate, you know, because I would expect this to be, and maybe, I assume Microsoft doesn't because their and may, I assume Microsoft doesn't because their products are probably a lot cheaper, but if we're going to spend a hundred grand and then forty grand a year, you know, we don't want to be blindsided by that forty grand becoming fifty next year because of what, whatever it is.
The inflator, and then what kind of lead time will they give you?
Well, I mean, I would like to see, like realistically, I think that's one thing that I hadn't thought of before, but I mean, it's a good question, it's like, we need a contract. And in a contract, you'd say, okay, you're going to have a three percent adder each year for the next three years, the next five years or something like that.
Right.
So at least we know to fix that into our costs and say, okay, we're going to budget for this much, just like we would with anything else. Because I would fully expect that they're going to raise their, like you said, it's a publicly traded company, you can buy Tyler's stock.
Right.
You know, they're going to want to boost their-
They're going to raise their, they're going to, we expect them to raise the rate, but we want it to at least be something we can control, plan for.
And what notification do we get on those?
Sure, well, to me, if we have a contract where they say, hey, each year it's going to go up to three percent, that's the way it should be, and then we can stick to that, you know.
I'd like to see us to buy what we need and not buy every bell and whistle if we don't need it. I don't, because forty-two thousand a year is a lot to put on taxpayer. Just if it saves us money, yes, but if it just makes it a convenience, no. I want it, I want to, if we're going to spend the money, I'd like to make sure we're getting the most value and not just doing extra.
I do have a breakdown too that includes all of this and every module that's under there, so I can send that out as well.
Yeah, maybe just send it out to the whole council, that's good.
Because this is too, not enough information.
Yeah.
Tell me you're jumping from fourteen grand to forty-two grand.
Maybe too much.
I think I would recommend to ask staff to break this Tyler into a couple of different options for us to look at.
Sure.
And then also to obviously look at what I mentioned with the contract and the yearly pricing.
Oh, that makes a lot of sense.
Anything else on that? I agree, see where we're getting, see what their contract terms are.
Well, it sounds really good.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you'd be back.
Thanks, Jess, thanks, Tim. Administrator's report, MISO report.
Sure, we'll jump right into that. I've got a couple of updates in there. So I do have some information on the Compass update. So we did have, as you know, we went long on capacity this year. So next year, they're predicting adequate capacity in the MISO market, so I don't know that we're going to do any contract, contracting for planning year twenty-four, twenty-five. But after that, they are forecasting a shortage, especially in the summer season. So last year, they had a full year season. This year, they went to a seasonal construct where they have a different price for each season. Our big shortfalls in the summer months, because we're a heating season, you know, or a cooling season, rather. Some cities have industrial capacity where their big, their big cost is in the wintertime. Not a lot, but a couple of them do, at least in the Compass group. So anyway, I'll be looking and tracking that. What I might be doing is looking at more like doing longer-term contracts for the summer season where we buy more capacity in the summer season, we have a fixed cost. But then maybe looking at the market in the, the winter and fall season where, basically, you know, it's a matter of, if the market's really, really high, we lock in a certain amount, we're really short, so it balances it out. At the same time, like if it's, if it, like this year it came in lower, the market did. So we'd be, we'd be able to protect ourselves basically. So anyway, we did get awarded for system innovation, part of our Tanless system. Appreciate Jared Nelson, our electric supervisor, submitted for that. And we were awarded by the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. So I'm going to be at their meeting next month to accept that award on behalf of the electric utilities. That's pretty exciting. Budget process has begun. So if there's anything in particular, I know that we've spoken to a certain degree about some capital projects along the Main Street corridor, some parking lot projects. So I know the city engineer is working on that right now. If there are any other items that the council's interested in particular, I know that the Parks Department's going to have some, possibly some larger requests. They're looking at a park module up in the Northeast Park, doing some larger improvements there. But anything in particular project-wise that council's interested, please let me know. We can take a look at that in our budget. Otherwise, department heads have their budgets right now. I'm not sure if we have any dates set up yet, Jessica?
I think we touched on that tomorrow.
Okay, we'll get some dates set up with them to go and go through their budgets. And then I'm still expecting to have a preliminary budget for council at our next meeting in August. Let's see, otherwise, we talked about a couple of things. And then I have a couple of other items just to kind of highlight in my, my packet there. You've got the MISO survey there, which is very interesting. I've joined the League of Minnesota Cities Fiscal Futures Committee. It's one of the subcommittees that helps form policy for the league. And it's, I took Nancy's spot on that committee. So it's going to be very interesting to see what they have. It's kind of an unwieldy group. I think there are about forty-five members of the committee and about fifteen of us attended the last meeting, or at least attempted to attend it. So, uh, you know, if they, if we actually have all forty people on a Teams meeting, I'm not sure how that's going to work, but we won't have to save very much for, you know, during the meeting. Anyway, that's not all bad. And then I did include in there a couple of other items there where we did apply for a couple of grants. One of those is for a battery storage project, and the other one is for a solar project. So we'll see about thirty days, so it was submitted earlier this month. It'll be, you know, thirty to sixty days to let us know if we're recommended to proceed or not. Previously, we had applied for something very similar, a different round of the IRA funding, and we weren't encouraged. So hopefully this one will go a little bit better.
Okay, any questions for Tim? Okay, on to the engineers' report, project updates.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just quick project updates, Highway Fifty-seven project, they're looking at paving that project Friday and Saturday, getting the first lift of asphalt in, majority of the concrete's in on actually both projects. MinDOT is also planning to mill an overlay, grind up the first layer of pavement and repave between the Roundabout project and the north end of the Fifty-seven project, so they evaluated that. So they just passed a change order for that to kind of fill in the gap there, but also going to do some patching north of the Roundabout into Manorville. That road's in pretty rough shape, so I've kind of put that back on the radar, so they're going to do that as part of their project, so go ahead.
They just made that change recently? You're talking about that section from where they stopped last year to the Roundabout?
Exactly, yep.
They finally decided that, hey, we should probably do that?
Yep, so they're, they're putting in a change order of their Fifty-seven project, so they're getting done, so I just saw it through today, so.
Did you push that?
Yep, yeah, we went back to them, told them it's in rough shape, so need to look at it. So when they do the, from the Roundabout north into Manorville, this is going to be a temporary fix when they pave the rutted-out driving lanes, I don't know yet. But there is a project planned from the bridge in Manorville up to the courthouse in next year, so that may be potentially put into that project. Where can I work in that to see if MinDOT's interested in that? So, because I think both communities are interested in getting that paved, because once they open that Roundabout back up, it's going to be pretty rough going to the north, it sounds like, by like Zed School and that, it's pretty rough. So if it's on the radar, it's on maintenance radar, maintenance couldn't believe that they weren't doing it, so we kind of got people talking, so they're doing it, so.
Good, thank you.
So that's moving forward. Uh, the Northeast Tower by the Fairgrounds is up and running. Uh, the removal of the other tower's planned for Monday, so that old tower's going to be coming down potentially Monday. So just a heads up on that.
They actually drained the old tower today, so we are running off of that Northeast Tower right now. So it's not quite a hundred percent, but.
Yeah, we have some controlling things to work through, but all things we worked through. So we got some backup controls, the current controls are controlling it, so all minor things that we'll dial in. Safe route school, we still got to put that flash of beacon up by the Fifth Avenue and Sixteenth Street intersection, where that's coming early in August here. In the 2023 street project, we're looking at having a pre-con shortly for that to get that, get that going. And then the other item that's going to be before the council, likely at the next meeting unless you have some other comments, is the INI project. Remember, we did a big INI investigation, looked in every manhole, looked in every sanitary sewer company, some deficiencies presented to the council, took some of those comments, went back to the staff, worked up ultimately the first phase of that project, six to seven hundred thousand dollar project, paid through the sewer enterprise funds to reduce INI, some manhole spot repairs, some castings to replace, and some lining of the sanitary sewer. So staff and I are reviewing that tomorrow morning, and we'll have that to the council for potential approval to go out for bids at the next council meeting, so. That is about it for project updates. Yeah, any questions?
Did I miss, are they still on for the twelfth for kind of their completion date?
That's the idea. Okay, all right. Let's see, we got some things to do and, I mean, they're paving, so.
We had late castings this morning, so.
I bet, I bet, so.
When are they, once the Roundabout's open, is that when they're doing the end of Sixteenth Street and?
Uh, so they are going to do that section between Sixteenth Street and Houston's or Eleventh there?
No, I mean, Sixteenth Street on the end where it connects to County Fifteen?
Yeah, that's a whole separate project that, that needs to be done after the detours are off.
But that's still on?
Yep, that's part of our 2023 street project, our mill and overlay, so it's a separate project, so. Yep, that's still planned. So yeah, we'll see, they're pushing hard and see what happens, so.
All right.
Nice.
Looking good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else got anything to bring in? Um, on to personnel, and I'm looking at the packet, and I didn't add this to the agenda, but it's in the packet, the Tho resignation.
Sure, well, I've kind of got it under, I've got it under sewer, so I think we'll just handle it there.
Okay.
It's kind of an overall, our sewer supervisor position update. So partly due to the resignation there. So if you look in your packet there, you do have a brief memo from Dave Aboson, our Water, Waste Water Supervisor. So he is requesting that the council authorize an individual who has a C license, who's able to test for the B, to give them as a temporary lead. We have not been able to complete a hire for Dave's position, and he's scheduled to retire this fall. So he's asking for someone who would be allowed to basically have a temporary lead until they would pass that B. If they weren't able to pass that, pass that B within one year, then they would be put back in their, their current position. Uh, we do have one employee who is senior, and Mr. Tho has submitted his resignation, so he would have been the other candidate who is, who is in that same position. So that's what Dave's asking for. It seems like from an operational standpoint, it would make sense. We have some things to work through there. It's still an issue with, obviously, that supervisor position being very difficult to fill. So I think that's item one. And then item two would be, including your package, you've got Mr. Tho's resignation. He's been with us for, I think, I don't know, two years, a little over two years. Very good employee, wanted to move up north, and, you know, he's chosen to, to take a job with the City of Walker, so.
Okay, so for the first one, I'm on board with making that happen for the temporary, because we have to have somebody in that position with losing two people. And sewer is kind of an essential service that we need to make sure we don't.
Well, so yeah, so we, we have posted the vacant job internally, so we do think we may be able to get an internal candidate, but it'll be failing on the backend again.
Sure.
So we, the concern is that, you know, from an operations standpoint, if, if Dave wasn't there, we wouldn't have anyone in this area to lead that division, and we need to have somebody to lead the division, so.
Okay. So is this Class B, is that what we need to keep working, or we need to have a Class A eventually?
Well, Class A is required for plant operations. And thankfully, you know, Dave does have a Class A and so does Charlie. So if it was an emergency, Charlie would, would end up spending more time with the plant. Obviously, that's not ideal, so that's one circumstance. You know, we're, we're at least legally speaking covered on that situation. The second situation would be a lead position. So typically, our lead operator is required to have a B. So we have, you know, operator two and then we have lead. So we have a person who's operator two who has significant amount of experience. So, you know, operationally speaking, he knows how to do the runs, do all the actual work, but he doesn't have that B license. So I mean, if he had the B, he would have qualified for the, the lead already. So that's basically what we're looking at, is just having someone in, you know, to run the department. Because worst-case scenario that Charlie was having to, you know, spend time at the plant to meet the requirements, he does not have time to, to do the rounds and do the other stuff that would be required for operations.
I thought we were looking for an A.
And we are, for the supervisor position, absolutely.
Oh, there's another position besides this lead?
Yeah, so Dan Trapp retired last year and we were not able to fill that position. So we weren't able to fill the lead. So what we ended up doing was council authorized us hiring at the bottom end, so we hired internally. Mike Bolster slid over from Streets into the Waste Water Department. So, and he doesn't actually have any licenses right now. He's testing for his Ds. But suffice it to say, I mean, the, the workflow, the on-call hours are being filled. It's just a matter of, right now, we don't have a lead position, which isn't absolutely required to be filled when you have a supervisor. But if a supervisor was to go out, we don't have a lead, we need to have somebody to actually lead that department still.
Yeah, so, so currently, we're down one position and now two because somebody's resigned?
Well, so yeah, so we'll be down, you know, at the end of the month here, like I think Isaac's got like August fourth, we'll be down one spot on the, in the department.
Right.
That's right. And we, we, that position was filled. So aggregate numbers, like the lead retired, we backfilled his person, his job with a lower level employee. So the total number of employees remained the same.
Yep, shifted it up.
Now we're, now Isaac's retiring, so we will have a vacancy as an operator two. And then, so we'll be backfilling that, possibly internally, but if not, then we'll fill it externally, but, you know, with a, probably another entry level. And then when Dave retires, you know, potentially October, we're looking at, if we can't have his job filled by then, it'll require us to have, someone has to lead that department, basically.
How long does it take to get from the B to the A?
Uh, I think it's two and a half years, three years.
Minimum. There's got to have so many hours plus then you got to test.
It is in a fast process. Um, you have to have your B for so long.
So long and then-
Before you can take the test.
And you have to have so many hours.
The pass rate on the A test has been like eleven percent the last three years. So it's not, there just are not a lot of A operators. We are investigating other options, so we did get a list of the A operators, all the A operators in the state. So we are going to be spending some money on doing some mailing, direct mailings to A operators, trying to recruit them to come to Caston. I mean, typically, you know, we post the job, Rural Water, the League of Minnesota Cities, different spots. You know, I think we've, we've done two interviews. One interview was somebody who was coming from California, and he would have been taking a big pay cut to come here. Now his cost of living would have been lower too, but he chose not to do that. He was, he was a strong candidate. The other operator, I disagreed a little bit with, with some of the staff on hiring or not, but in the long, short of it, we didn't hire that person because they had some limitations that, you know, anyway. So yeah, it's just been difficult to fill these jobs.
So it's possible once Dave's gone, we're going to either be relying on Charlie or have an open position for three-plus years, hoping that this gentleman here gets from B to A?
Yeah, I mean, realistically, I think if he wants-
Charlie's not going to retire soon, is he?
Yeah, no, thankfully not. Um, you know, the goal is, the goal is to hire, we need to hire a supervisor. So we need to hire an A sewer with a C water license. So that's the goal. At some point in time, that job needs to be filled. Um, in the, in the short term, you know, probably over the next, you know, six months, we can continue to have operations work, you know. In the long run, we need to have that, that solved.
What's, what's the worst-case scenario if Dave's gone and Charlie is unable to?
Hire WK, HKS or other?
Yeah, I mean, there are some independent contractors. People serve, for example, as a company that does do some of these other plants, typically in smaller towns. You know, there are, Stewartville, they didn't have an operator, so they ended up hiring a fellow who's retired, and he does basically the minimum, you know, work level for them. I think maybe he does ten hours or twelve hours a week for them. So it's possible that's, that's some direction we might have to go. I know I have spoken with Dave too about a phased retirement, and so that's something he's contemplating a little bit right now, but.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's, they're definitely a huge shortage, and Brandon can speak to that, of qualified, you know, especially A licenses, but even the B licenses are, they're just not for any people who are getting them. So, I mean, I encourage any of these young people I talk to to look at them because-
It's not an easy test.
Well, the test is very hard. The state is looking at making the test easier, because of course, engineers wrote the test, so. They wrote it at their level, so, you know, some of these guys are, you know, can't pass.
I know people that have taken the A test, I've talked to them, and they've not finished the test. There's a time limit, and they've not-
Yeah, I mean, what I've actually seen is, you know, is that a lot of the fellows who have A tests were taking them before 2020. So in 2020, they actually changed the test. And since then, like I said, they have seen the pass rate go down. Now, whether that was just because it made it a lot harder, or if, you know, there was better study materials before they changed the test, which seems possible. Um, you know, it's, it's a hard test for a lot of these folks to pass, so. Anyway, so that's the update I have on the sewer department. So what I'm hearing is that we're open to a temporary promotion for a lead position?
My opinion would be to do that so that he can transition to that before Dave actually retires, if Dave does a hard retirement. He's got twelve months to pass out, and then we have to go to Plan B ourselves on that position. Because hiring an A is not, it's proved to be difficult, we've had that posted for how long?
Yeah, the A has been posted for the last three months.
Yeah, I mean, so it might take us-
A year.
A year to find somebody by the time we get that person.
I mean, realistically, the best, that would be for somebody who, I, I don't want to say gets fired, but if there's a difference of opinion and someone wants to leave their current job, that's the most likely place where you're going to find somebody who's got an A license. I mean, realistically. They're going to have to be, either they're, they're stuck because they can't move up, or they're disagreeing with their manager. You know, it has to be from a bigger city that has an A plant. There's not that many of those either. And a lot of those folks are very single-minded, like Rochester, there's a couple of operators, but all they do is sit at the plant all day. So they've got an A, but they don't do distribution, they don't do a lot of the other work that the supervisor here does do. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's not an easy thing, but.
Is everybody on board with that?
Yep.
Do you, you don't need any?
No, I mean, I'll just direct staff to move in that direction then, based on what the council said.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, now the next is the cleaning staff position.
On the good news side of it, I guess, personnel-wise, we did have a couple of applicants for the custodial position. You recall Sandy retired at the end of June, so staff have been doing things internally. I might say I had a, you, you told me to push the garbage around, so that's what I did last week. I did, I stacked all the garbage at City Hall here, so, you know. So all right, it's good stuff. No, I don't mind at all. It's, uh, we're here to help, and I think as a team, we've been doing well. Like the ladies have been vacuuming stuff. The library has actually been the one that seemed to have had the most issues. So obviously, we want to, we want to help out all the staff folks and, so pending a background check, right? Pending a background check, Mr. Voight, I did go around with him, and he's got a good amount of experience. He's currently working at Mayo full-time in a similar type of position. The nice thing about this job is it is, it is very flexible. I mean, you can do it on the weekends, you can do it. He works third shift, so he's planning on doing the library in the mornings when he gets off of his, his shift, and then the other, you know, he'll fill in doing the other work, possibly what he can or whatever. So it's, it's, it can be a really good job for folks too. So I'd be looking for approval of Mr. Voight pending his background.
Okay, any questions on that discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
I'm sorry, can I just ask, this is posted at the salary that we had discussed prior?
Yeah, it's in the salary range, that's correct.
Okay, then I'll second the motion.
Okay, thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Um, and then attorney, I'm just going to switch things around a little bit. Is there anything in the additional items that anybody wants to discuss before we go to the closed session? That way, if people want to leave that aren't involved in the closed session, they can leave and not have to come back.
And there are a lot of items this, this time around, so a lot of informational things.
Anything you want to point?
Yeah, how about M-8? Is there any?